We can call the meeting to order. And pursuant to chapter two of the.
Recording in progress.
Calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And as this is a Zoom meeting, we are obligated to say that pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2023. That include extending certain COVID measures. Adopted during the state of emergency, this meeting of the West Newbury Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. To the greatest extent possible, members of the public who wish to view and or listen to the meeting may do so using Zoom. And by calling the telephone number that was posted in the announcement of the meeting. I am Deb Hamilton. I am. The vice chair of the planning board, and I'd like the rest of the board to introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Ray Chuck. I'm a member of the planning board.
Anne Bardine, planning board member.
And Cronin, planning board member.
And we have Adam, who is recording the meeting and a guest. The first item on our agenda, Sue, shall I just go ahead and begin?
Sure.
Is John Sarkis, and John has some. This is an informal hearing to discuss 20 Ash Street. Which is a 10.18 acre property with 246 feet of frontage. It's in zone B, which requires 100 feet of frontage and one acre minimum. He is looking for reduced. He's looking to partition this, and I'm gonna leave the rest to you, John. So please, go ahead.
Thank you, Deb. For the record, John Sarkis, I am a hired consultant to the owners of the property. Which are Dennis and Debbie Bruce. They've lived in town for a while, in a couple of spots, actually. But they've been at this location for some time now. This property you might, some of you might recall, was built by Jack Travers. You might remember Jack, a local excavator who passed a few years back.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen if that's acceptable.
Please do.
Okay, I'm gonna start with this one here. Okay. This is a sort of a large, you know, 400 foot view of the area. To the left of your screen is Maple Street that leads northwesterly to Main Street. We are southeasterly of the intersection of it and Meeting House and Georgetown Hill Road, highlighted in green here. You can see what's around. Property fronts on Ash Street. And towards the rear of the property, there is the extension of Kimball Road. Where some. OSRD type lots were created and some open space around it. I'm assuming the open space is shown as R9-12E right here. I do not know what is going on with parcel R- R9-9. I believe it is just a building lot, but I am not 100% sure that I have not inquired. As you can see, the properties to the, let's say northwest of the subject are mostly developed. Already, I believe R9-9B just sold recently, just transferred recently, is being redeveloped. And I'm not sure if R9-10 has yet to be built upon. Here, I don't believe it has. Across the street, this is some sort of low and flat land. I don't even know if, yeah, there are some structures down at the far other farther other end of it. I'm not sure.
I believe that's, I believe that's either APR or CR.
That was my understanding too, yes.
Yeah, from a previous owner.
That's, that's how I understood it to be too. Thank you. I'll go to the next MIMAP. Which is a blow up of the, of the particular lot showing the zoning as well as 10-foot contours and structures. Okay, so you can see that the property actually is in two districts, RC and RB. The buildable portion of the property is all within the RB, and the bulk of it is of course in the RB district. The existing dwelling is located right where my hand is here. And there is also a barn garage type structure here as well. They're at the very high point of the lot. The slope at the rear appears to be mostly just under 20%. As I could tell from plans you'll see later, there's one area right about in here. That looked to be over 20%. The rest of it was all less than 20% steep, but less than 20%. And there is some vegetated wetlands towards the back, let's say the north corner of the property. The property was. How can I get rid of this thing on top here? Let me see here. There we go. The property was, as I said, originally developed by Jack Travers long ago. He had a septic plan prepared. And I was able to get a copy of that septic plan. The septic plan had two-foot increment topo. It had wetlands flagged. But it did not, it did not say how they were flagged, or whether or not it went through an order of condition, an anorad or anything like that. I am assuming it did because it looks like he put, he had a crossing at the time. But as I verify it, I'm not a botanist or wetland scientist, but I can tell that these are fairly close to the, the. Edge of the wetlands that we would have today. I've measured things out there and looked at it. For the purpose of our meeting today, it certainly is, is close enough. There's plenty of, of buildable area on the site. It's certainly close enough to, to work with this plan today. So, so what you're seeing here is sheet one of two sheets for his proposed septic design. This is the section showing, let's call it the front or southern end, coming off Ash Street. Shows where the driveway that feeds the existing dwelling is located now. And the distance from the edge of the paved area to the stone wall, that is the edge of the right away here. Lot lines, left and right. Driveway comes up. And then we go to the next page. Here's the match line. I've got this situated. What's going on here? To be just the same orientation that the previous plan was. Driveway comes up. And hits the, this is where it was proposed on the, on the original septic plan. I believe the house is in almost the exact location, but has a different footprint from what you see here. Again, for the purpose of discussion, this is accurate enough for today's discussion. Septic system was constructed in this area. As we know, and a reserve area here. Later on, a barn was built back in this area. They had done various perks throughout the site. They settled on this one as being the best one. Some of them, some of the others done were suitable and passable. Some were not. This was, for his purposes at the time, the, the best alternative. The, the slope of the driveway in this area is at 12%. These are again, two-foot increments. I've scaled it out and found that. It was built to about a 12% grade, it at its steepest point right here. You can see on this planet, a scale written as 1 and 2 equals 20, but there's no graphic scale here. And plans have been reduced, so you can't just automatically use that. You've got to find some other measurement here to rely upon. I, I took these two plans, these two sheets, and combined them. To make this one sheet. Set in the same orientation as we were just looking at. I literally cut them off. And, and taped them together and then had it scanned to create this. So I'm gonna blow this up a little bit and work with this with you now from the street going northerly to where the existing house is. Again, Ash Street, we have about 246 feet of frontage. I highlighted on my version, the edge of wetlands as shown on this plan, but not all of it scanned through well. So I'm gonna run my cursor over it again, so you can see. All the wetlands that were shown on the plan, I'm gonna walk through right now. As you can see, I'm moving along that, you can sort of see the faint blue in there. And then coming down right along the edge of the existing drive. Just a few feet off, maybe five or six feet off the existing drive. And then it fans out a little bit as you get closer to Ash Street. And then runs along Ash Street. The last delineation shown on this plan, or the end of the delineation shown on this plan is right here. They do not show what goes on to the east. Of that. I have personally walked it. And the bulk of the area in the front is wet. But the wetland line is not always directly against the, the stone wall. It, it meanders along here like this somehow. Exactly how, I don't know. When we get to that stage, I'll have a botanist do that. There is a drainage ditch along the edge of Ash Street right here. That is a road drainage ditch. Just, you can jump across it. I have several times. And remained in one piece. The, the area between the drainage ditch and the stone wall does appear to be dry for most, for a good portion of this frontage anyway. Within the right of way, so that is in the, in the Ash Street right of way. There is some dry space between the drainage ditch. And the stone wall as the edge of the right of way.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
I don't know, Ray.
If you let me share the screen real quick.
Yes.
I'll be able to supplement what you just said.
Okay.
And I'm not being allowed to do that.
Do I have to stop?
I don't know, Sue's muted. She's saying things.
Yeah, probably, John. Maybe if you could just stop sharing for a minute.
So just take me a second, and I think it'll help everybody here, John. Otherwise, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do this. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Thanks, Ray.
So this is your stone wall. This is the ditch which John hops across just for fun. This is that little kind of like wing of dry land here.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Yep.
And is the current driveway paved?
No, the. The current driveway.
It's gravel, compacted gravel.
Right, it's compacted gravel.
Thank you.
And I don't know the exact width. I'd say about 16 feet, maybe a little more off the top of my head.
Just by eyeballing it and looking at the tire tracks, John, I think you've been generous there. As far as the extent of the gravel portion. I would say you're closer to 14 feet there.
Could be.
Says the professor.
Well, John and I go way back, so.
Yes, so do we.
Just wait till the banter gets started.
I think.
Ray, believe me, I'm having a hard time here staying serious, you know? All right, let me continue, please, though. We have about 246 feet of frontage on Ash Street. You can also see the mark between RB and RC, the line between RB and RC. Coming up to the top, again, it's all, this is now all in one drawing. You get a better sense of what's going on here. So Dennis and Debbie asked me if I would help them. Develop the property into two lots, you know, partition the property into two lots. Under the reduced frontage provisions of the zoning bylaw. They wanted to get an idea if they could make it into two lots and potentially sell the existing home. And size down into something on the newly created lot and stay right where they, where they are. So I did a quick analysis using these available tools that I have. And find that. I'm gonna go to the concept plan here now. And find that there is really enough room to do what we're talking about geometrically. There is, this is a concept division that I have. Again, it, it could change, but for, for the purpose of the. Matters that need to be flushed out in this meeting, it's good enough. I assume that we would, we would split the frontage. I don't see a reason to, to not split the frontage. Leave one, one of them with 100 feet and the other one with 146. Maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't, but for now, I'm gonna show it this way. Each of these would comply with the required lot width at the setback. As you see it here. I envision making a common drive out of the existing. The existing gravel drive. Perhaps widening it if necessary, or, or. Supplementing it if necessary, but in that location is what we're looking to. It is a very level entry through here. I show a 40-foot area off the westernmost stone wall. Which, which I would propose to make. An easement for the common drive all the way up to this point. This entire area. Would be a common drive. Or would have the easement on it. As you can see, lot two here is, has about 75,000. CBA contiguous buildable area, square feet. I, I actually measured it out as being about 80,000 square feet, but I'm calling it 75 because. Under the rules and regulations, we need about 60. So for, again, for today's purposes. I'm just gonna say we have enough CBA in the lot, and we can also figure. The 200-foot radius, 200-foot diameter circle that's necessary under zoning. The other lot, lot one, that would contain the existing dwelling, meets all setbacks. Has plenty of CBA, as you can see, and can easily fit the. The required circle. This house site for lot two. Would probably be somewhere about where my cursor is now. At the low end of that, that 200-foot circle that you see. And its septic will probably be up in this area right here. And driveway would come off and enter right here. There is another driveway not shown on this plan. That exits somewhere in here. And goes through to the back of this, where, where the barn is. I'm showing this, this common driveway is coming up to this point for today. Simply because there may be a reason for the owner of. Lot one or lot two to use this other driveway pathway, if you will. Maybe during construction, maybe, maybe to, to build a septic system. Maybe it would also, maybe another barn could be put right here, and that would serve as access into it. So for today, you know, I believe it makes sense to show the area of the common drive easement as far up as, as is. The, the frontage, let's say, of this lot on the existing driveway.
John, would you point out again where you think the septic system for lot two would be?
Somewhere right in here.
Okay.
Could also be over in here, Deb. That's where the best soils were, right in this area.
Okay.
John, do you know if there's a required setback from the property line for a system?
There is.
Do you know what it is?
I think it's, I think a system is just 10 feet.
That's minimal. It's minimal. Okay.
Yeah, it's not much.
And the distance between systems?
I don't know of one.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yep. But there's, there's setbacks required for all components of this, of a septic system. And, you know, I, I just can't remember them all. Many towns have their own that go beyond. So I, I honestly review them every time I go and do one.
Understood.
You know, yep. So the issues at hand, as I see it, are. To me, this looks like a relatively simple. Plan. The road's already built. We can see and know that it's safe. If any of you know Debbie. Debbie Bruce, you'll know that she was the, one of the bus drivers in town. And you'll know that every year during the winter, she drives a bus home. Right up this driveway and parks it right about here. All winter long, and has never had a problem accessing the, the property with a school bus. Which I don't believe has quite the traction of most of our SUVs these days. So, you know, to me, this is a real simple, simple project. We have more than the required acreage for everything. We have very easy vehicular access throughout. Couple items would be, of course, a location of a potential turnout. For emergency vehicles. And then the, you know, definition of, of access down here along Ash Street. So I know there's been all kinds of things in the past. When I was on the board, there was. Some discussion about what constituted access. And I looked at rules that were amended recently. I think 2019, the board. And the town voted some, some change to the bylaw on that. Don't think it really clarifies things much, to be honest with you. And that's the primary reason I'm here today. I just wanna make sure that, you know, that this. You know, this, this plan, you know, complies with. The requirement for access and the board, you know, will get a determination as to whether or not. Board thinks it's worth it for me to pursue filing this formally.
My only observation is the proximity to wetlands, that if you are going to change, widen the driveway. It's probably gonna require working with the Conservation Commission to get permission to. Do any additional filling in the wetlands, certainly.
Certainly.
Deb, I've got a question or two.
Sure, go ahead.
So, yeah, John, you and I are focused on the same thing here. In the, the new version of our zoning bylaws. It is now section. 7D4. Each lot frontage must also provide the possibility of reasonable practical access. Without the use of a common driveway. And so with this division, that means that somehow you'd have to cross that 126-foot. And have reasonable practical access. But what concerns me is that's all wet. And I, I look to my fellow board members here and to you, John, to. To, if, if anybody knows, can you have reasonable practical access over that much wetland? And then another concern I have is your proposed building site. Up further off, you scale up there. That 200-foot diameter circle, that's pretty steep land there. Can you scroll up to it?
Yep, one second.
Yep.
The building, the building site would be right about here, Ray.
Yeah, so I, you know me, I double-checked you on that slope, and I, I agree with you. You can see there's a 25-foot arrow up above there between a couple of buildings, and I kind of scaled that off. On the slope of the driveway, and I agree that we're talking, that looks like about. 12% in the steepest portion, just like you said. And that means that up slope of your building, you're gonna have something that's steeper. I'm guessing we're talking between 15 and 20%, right where that 200 is written.
I'm not so sure. I agree. Th- this section here is at 12%, right? Okay, so.
So where you got, so where you got the 200, where it's written 200. I think your topo lines there are even closer together, and that's where I'm getting a sort of a 15%. Now that's, that would be above your proposed building site.
Correct.
So I, I'd be worried about building on, on a fairly steep slope there. I'd want to know more about how you're dealing with the topography there. I think you're gonna have to, I, I don't know, I don't know how the structure would go. I also am not sure that it's within. My right to ask that question, except that we are talking about a special permit here, so I wanted some reassurance. And then, you know, the, the land has been kind of graded out for that existing septic system, so now if you put a new septic system in there. Yeah, I did, just like Sue was a little concerned there. I'm a little concerned about the proximity of two septic systems right next to each other. So this is an informal meeting, and, and those are just the things that, that come to mind. And, and of course, you're gonna have to do some regrading. From the common driveway to get into wherever it is you plan on having vehicles parked for the new structure. And things are getting a little tight there with, with some complicated topography. So those are. Those are the things that I see just looking at it. I, I think that you've done a fine job with the geometry here. And I think the geometry does work. I'm, I'm concerned about that, the things that I just mentioned.
Would you like me to address them?
Sure, I mean, Deb's the chair here.
Yeah, please go ahead, John.
Okay, so, so as far as the, the steepness of the lot in the area where the building would go. I agree with you. It's about 15 some odd percent in, in that area. I've built on stuff much worse than that. Everybody out in California has. And. Leave that to the professional, I guess, and I'll get it done. And, and I'm not, I'm doing something in Andover now on a lot. That is 20,000 square feet. And is much steeper than this. And I'm putting, if you saw what I'm putting on it, you'd, you'd say, all right, never mind, this is, that's a, this is non-issue for him.
Okay, I mean, there, and, and you. Okay, I mean, there, and, and you have to deal with water management issues. His water sheets down the slow part of the house, but.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. I know.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun, but that's what we do. Uh, but, but you're, you know, I agree, you know, it's, it's not ideal, you know, obviously it would be nice to have a nice flat lot. And it's also possible that we could move the house into the buffer zone. And put it in a flatter spot and have a lot more area to, to, to grade around it and make that work. Uh, but I, I have been to the site many, many times and can see a, a solution here. Uh, pretty easily for, for a skilled builder, uh, of which I try to be.
As far as. I, you know, when I'm looking at satellite imagery, it looks like this is all sort of a moan. Uh, moan lawn, it's open. There's just a few nice trees in there, right?
Correct, yep. And we're gonna try and save a couple of those, uh, as part of the plan, part of the land plan. Um, as far as the septic's being close together. That is of course not in the purview of the, of the planning board. Uh, that is in the purview of the Board of Health. And as we know, uh, two houses, uh, could not possibly generate anywhere near the affluent to overload the area. Uh, Title V permits up to 10,000 gallons per day without treatment in one system. And so, you know, this, these are two single family houses. If they were both duplexes and both had four bedrooms in them, we still wouldn't be anywhere near 10,000 gallons a day. So there's plenty of capacity there and there are a whole other set of regulations. That will govern that, that we'd have to comply with, period.
Yep. And then the, the reasonable practical access bit?
That, uh, that rule sucks. Oh, I'm sorry. That is a, that is a NIMBYism. Let's stop people from building rule. We all know that. Uh, and there should be, uh, that rule should be wiped out.
I'm not so sure that's the case though, John. You know, I, I think it's. It, it's more if there's an issue over the use of the driveway, right? The common drive, that there's gonna be some alternative for that homeowner to be able to get out of. The, uh.
Well, that makes sense, Tim. I, I, I wouldn't disagree with that, of course, and I'm only being a wise guy. Uh, yep, that would be, that's the issue at hand and I, I'd be curious to know how the board has, has, uh, handled it in the past. Uh, I believe we had one recently with, um, with, uh.
Eighty-seven, yes, eighty-seven Crane Next Street, yep.
And curious to know what happened there.
I think, I think we ruled that it was, uh, proper access and that we got overruled by that. And you, is that how you remember it? Or have I got it backwards?
I think you're talking about the Baker, the other one on that. Yep, but at this point, Ray, we're talking about the one that's still kind of current, Bill Spalding's on, on Crane Next. Um.
Hold on.
That, that was an issue, that wasn't reduced frontage for the two lots. It had to do with whether the ANR still had access.
That was a co- common drive.
Yes, it was a common drive, but the other lot was an ANR and I, Sue, correct me if I'm getting this wrong, cause it's a little confusing, but. We were advised by town council. That the, in that case, the ANR would be deemed to have, um, access over the common drive. Isn't that right, Sue?
Yeah.
But that's not, but that ANR is not reduced frontage. It's an ANR. So it's slightly different.
Correct, but, but this, this applies to common driveways.
Yeah, I'm looking.
This does not apply to lots. This applies to common driveways.
Right.
Right, just to be, just to be clear, John, they have not made a decision on the eighty-seven Crane Neck.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and, and, and both of these are compliant as far as frontage, correct? I mean, uh, RB zoning is only 100 feet required for frontage.
For reduced frontage.
It is reduced frontage lot.
Ordinarily, it's 200 feet. That's the other, another question, you know, we're.
Well, we, Sue and I looked and, and in RB zoning.
It's 200.
This is in, in new section six A, intensity of use, table of dimensional control. It's, uh, now on page 43.
Ordinarily 200 feet and for reduced frontage, it could be 100.
Yes.
Purposes of this case, we're considering this all in B because that's the predominant amount of land.
Yes. Okay.
Oh yeah, these technically comply with the, they're both more than 100. I guess.
Yeah, we, we would have the two special permits.
Right. I mean, we don't have the delineation of the wetlands along the front there, but I think everybody can agree it's pretty wet all, all along there. Cause it's all that Kelly or formerly Kelly land. There are a bunch of lots created. And there's quite a depth to get into, as Ray said, to get into the. You know, such as cropping out of the lot, it's how far you have to travel to get up there, so. Um, I guess that delineation could be key, but it looks like it's pretty darn wet all the way across.
It, it is. The, the bulk of the area in here is wet. There are some islands of dry land in there.
Right.
I have, I haven't studied it. The question that I have is. You know, very simple. You guys know how I am. I try to make it as black and white a- as possible. And do I need to get an order of conditions to pursue this type of a plan is the question that I would have.
I would say yes. As a former conservation commissioner. Um, I, I think that y- y- you definitely need a. Well, you could do a determination first, but I suspect.
No, no, Deb, that's not what I'm asking. What, what, what I'm asking is. With your planning board hat on only.
Oh, okay.
How do you construe, uh, the, the regulation to read? Do I have reasonable practical access?
Actually, yeah, naturally, John said it says the possibility of reasonable practical access. So this is very similar to the, to the eighty-seven Crane Neck.
It is.
The town council said that you did not, because you're not going to create a new driveway, you do not need to apply. You do not need to get a permit for that. Um, they would not give you a permit if they knew you had other access, so. Um, you're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place if we required it, which.
That's right.
According to town council, um, you do not.
Right, so what I'm looking for is some sort of case law, some sort of precedent. Where, you know, you, you were crossing. Looks like about 200 feet of wetland. Uh, before you got to the other wetland boundary, probably more than 226, yeah, probably more than, more like 250 feet. Yeah, whether, um, because I, I know you can, you can cross wetlands. You could create a bridge. Uh, with, with a light footprint there. Uh, but is that, that word practical, reasonable, practical, both of those are subjective words that, that are bothering me here. And I'd love for some lawyer to weigh in, Tim.
Yeah, I think, isn't this the case that, uh, before I was on the board that, uh, was regarding Middle Street?
Yeah, this is, this is that one, I think. This is closer than, than, uh, Spalding.
Yeah, right. No, I agree with you, Ann, and I don't, I'm not, cause it was before my time, not really that familiar with, um, what was required there. Did folks remember what was required?
Well, we turned, we've turned it down as saying that it didn't have it and.
Uh, yeah, and I don't know that it was. If I, if I remember, that was not about a common drive. That was about us, uh. Uh, we, that was about the other rule, uh, six B, six B four. Let me go up. That was about, uh. Cause what they used as their plan was to prove their point was not a common drive, if I remember correctly. They wanted to have a common drive coming off the other, the other street.
No, we're not talking about that part of it though, John. Actually, this is Gorman. Once Gorman bought it, this is, he accessed from Middle Street. Isn't this, this is, I don't know, Ray, you were the one that was involved in this too.
Um, yeah. Approve and it got overturned in the litigation. This is kind of what I remember reading about.
That's what I remember because that's, that's why it was, because, um, what's the name of the guy?
Mr. Gorman. Gorman and Baker.
Baker, yeah, that's why Baker objected and took it further because we said that it was reasonable access. It was a much narrower bit of wetland than this is.
Yes.
And, uh, and it got overruled.
That also had steep slope, remember?
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't the issue.
Yeah, this is just about the access over the wetlands.
Correct, uh, but it did also have a very steep slope and that lot was a conforming lot too, right? The, the, the area in question had 200 feet frontage?
It did. That wasn't, that wasn't an issue.
It wasn't reduced frontage. It had to do with, it's the access thing.
Right, so it, that, that, that was. The buildable area of that lot would have been accessed by a common drive elsewhere?
No common drive. It got its own drive.
Common drive.
Oh, that's a different matter.
If I remember right, we thought that you could reasonably build. A crossing of that wetlands, that it wasn't gonna require so much work. And we thought that that was reasonable. And then I think Mr. Baker, uh, objected to that and then, uh, he appealed and we got overruled on that.
That's, I understand. The, the question at hand though is the lot that had that frontage where we thought. Could, could be crossed, wet, wet could be crossed. Was that lot to be served by a common drive? No, in that case, we, the, the judge's decision was not referring to section seven. It was referring to this section six A nine. Frontage must provide access to the lot from the right of way counted. So that's a different, that's a different matter.
But it still had, turned on access over wetlands. I guess that's a similarity on.
It, it did, but it was referring to a completely different section. And when, when a judge makes a decision like that, you can't apply that to every other section of the bylaw. You can only apply it to, to that one section. I, I hear what you're saying.
Which though, about reasonable practical access, wasn't it? Isn't that, I think that's, that, that's wording, I think, from some of the case law. I think that's gotten picked up here.
So we asked this question directly to town council. Um, and you should read back over that. She said, because in the Baker, um, Gorman Baker case. They actually needed to build a driveway over wetlands. So the decision was they needed to have that permit. In advance of you granting, um, permission. So that was the difference in that case. That is why it got overruled.
And I believe, I believe that refers to six A nine for that.
Obviously, I mean, if you've got the permit in hand, then you, you, you can, you're basically showing that you've got the access. But in here, as Sue pointed out, it's the possibility.
Right, this is, yeah.
Of having that access and, uh.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you still had, if, I mean, if you got permission to do it. You wouldn't have to do it. The, the permission itself would be. An indication of reasonable practical access. I'm, I'm not trying to throw rocks in here. I'm just trying to, to, you know, uphold the law in the town as it's written. And, and this is why I'm stumbling about here.
So I, I wanna take each of these two paragraphs in and of themselves. Because you sorta have to. Frontage must provide access to the lot from the right of way counted for frontage unless otherwise approved by the planning board. Blah, blah, blah.
That's about ANR though, right? Oops, sorry.
That's, that is about every lot. That is, that is.
So that's.
About reduced frontage lots.
And six A one, it says frontage must be continuous on a public way. Check. Uh, and then you got the circle, then you got no more than two and, uh, you're not blocking other stuff. So I, I, I don't, I don't see that, that's not where I'm hung up anyway. Where I'm hung up is the language in, in seven D. And it's seven D four, which is on new page 65. Each lot frontage must also provide the possibility of reasonable practical access from the proposed structure or use. To the way without using a common driveway. So that would mean, without crossing your red line there, John, we gotta get from the new building to the road and then. You know, what, could you reasonably do that? And not just reasonable, reasonable and practical. And, and now, now I'm hung up on it, cause you know, I mean, honestly. I, I, even if you wanted to recreate, you know, to, uh, what do you call it when you recreate the wetland that you disturbed?
Replicate.
Replicate.
Replicate, that's the words, like, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see how you could replicate the wetlands here.
Replicate in this area.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, and now we're, we're back to, uh, practical. I mean, it'd be pretty impractical to do all that. But I, I don't know. I, I, I really wanna hear what Ann and Deb and Tim think.
From my standpoint, you, you know, this is the only thing I actually picked up. I didn't even, you know, the, the grades and things like that. I appreciated that additional information. I wasn't really. Conscious of that. I was just, you know, I was just looking at the requirements and I came to the seven D four. And I, I kind of understand why the language is there, but it's, it's a difficult thing to satisfy because usually that's why there is a common driveway. Um, you know, it's, it has the practical access and some, some other place doesn't and, uh. I just don't, you know, you're the expert, John, on the configuration of lots. I just don't know if it could be. Lots could be configured some other way that, you know, where there would be the possibility without going through the wetland, but maybe not.
Yeah, given that language in seventy-four, a lot whose frontage is practically all wet is a pretty tough one.
So I'm gonna throw one other, uh, idea out at you. Whereas, um. We have more frontage than we need. I could propose a public way here. Because this is my only access to the site. I don't have any other way in. I can make the effort. And, um, contact all my butters and see if there's another way in that does not involve a crossing. And if I can't get that, then I would be forced to. Propose a short cul-de-sac. Which would cut my lot size requirement in half. And permit me to fit a complying lot. In the same area with a cul-de-sac right here.
Yeah, so that cul-de-sac, if you did that, then you wouldn't, technically you wouldn't need either special permit, right?
Correct.
Probably, well.
And it's possible I'll get three lots out of the site if I do that, if I can create enough frontage.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you might need, because of the wet, you might need a little relief on your road, but for a road serving two or three houses.
Right.
That's a way that the board tends to look more kindly on.
And, and that's, that you could construe as, can I get reasonable or practical access to where the house site is? A way of doing that would be to go through the Form B process instead.
Interesting.
So in my mind, you know, the reason we have things like common drives in town is exactly for this. Is, everybody knows we need housing. This is a lot easier way of getting a, a plan built. And, uh, a road that is maintained by the owners and not the, not the community.
Yep, I agree. I certainly would prefer that it's. A common driveway than having to upgrade it to road standards. I mean, you, you'd have to fill an awful lot more. Uh, wetland in order to do that. Um, and, and as others have pointed out, pretty much that whole stretch. Of Ash Street is wet, i- including the, the next lot south and north. Um. To me, the, the, the common driveway. It, it seems to be the best option.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, John, your point is well, i- is well made, um, that this seventy-four. Is somewhat at odds with other goals of the town, so. Um, but that's a policy matter for another, another.
Yeah, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if the last line of seventy-four was practical access from the proposed. Was practical access from the proposed structure or use to a way. Without using a common driveway. But it says the way.
Well, we don't have any other way here, I mean.
Well, I mean, it, because if it was to a way, then, then the practical method would be the, the. Cul-de-sac, the actual creation of a new road, then you'd have prac, practical access to a way.
Right, but if you had a cul-de-sac in the road, you'd have different frontage and the, all these other problems disappear, just makes. More serious road, yeah, the, the piece that Cat, Pat Kelly still owns to the south, that's equally wet all along the front there, a strip of that doesn't help you, right?
Correct, it looks that way to me, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we looked at that at one point, that's, that's right, that's in between this lot and Whitegate Farm, right?
Yep.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, all of this, all the way down to where that new house has been built under the power lines, that was all Pat and Bob Kelly, you know, Jack.
In fact, in fact, Jack's, Jack was Pat Kelly's brother.
She's Pat, he was Pat's brother, I mean, yeah. So this was, and all that stuff on, on Kimball too, didn't they divide all that?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so these lots are gonna keep coming up and coming up and coming up.
So that, within that forty foot width, John, there's no other. I, I just don't know, you know, the land better than I, there's no other way to, you know, conceivably construct a driveway.
Can I, uh, can I share the screen again?
Sure.
You mean like parallel driveways?
Yeah, right.
That's all wet too, because the wetland runs along the edge of the driveway now, not along the.
Yeah, that was my question, I'm not that familiar with the property.
Can you see the, uh?
There it is up there.
So I'm guessing, and Deb would know better than me, but. The, the color change in these trees here probably is a very rough delineation of the wetland.
Correct.
I agree.
There's, there's actually, if I may. Uh, you can't see my, uh, my pointer now, but where you're pointing right now. There's dry land within that color change right there.
Yeah. Right in, right in that area. Mentioned islands of dry land.
Right.
And then this is the boarding lot, and you said you didn't know what the disposition of this was?
No, it's still owned by Pat Kelly according to the records on the town's mapping, but who knows?
Yeah, I mean.
The vestiges of the Christmas tree farm up in there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah. I mean, there's reasonable access through the neighboring lot.
Well, except that it may all be wet along the frontage too, that's what it seems like to me, if you look.
It is wet along the frontage.
I was looking at a topo map, it's actually better over here.
Yeah.
By the way, this is cute, there's the bus, there's the school bus.
Looks as big as a house.
Yeah, alright, well, I just, I just.
Parallel, yeah, the, the question I had was just that area that's parallel to the existing driveway, it looked like it was pretty wide at the roadway there, right?
Oh wait, one more, one more.
I, I appreciate that, Tim, you're, you're right, uh. But it does, it's, it, no, I would say, but it doesn't, yeah.
I, I see.
This is the broader area, topo of the broader area.
But that's interesting because it's not showing up as wet there, I mean, that's the thing, John. You know, maybe that's not all wet, maybe you can, maybe it's, you know what I mean?
It really isn't, I, I walk right through it, you can, you can walk right through it, there are wet spots, there are dry spots. So, you know, what the, the total square footage of, of, um. You know, disturbance you would cause, I have no idea if it would be less than five thousand or more than five thousand. I'd have to guess it would be less than five thou, it would be more than five thousand, excuse me. Which, you know, you're not automatically entitled to that permit from, from DEP if that's the case. Uh, however, a subdivision would be different. Since it is my only way in with a, a road and, and. The only way I could develop the site to its potential would be with a road. I would be entitled to some filling and replicating in that case. And of course, if we did that, we'd have to do as many units as we could fit to justify that cost, but that isn't what we want to do.
So if you look on the town's website, and I know our mapping, wetlands mapping is certainly not. Um, you know, perfect. Um, if you look to the far right, which is the east of the property, it measures going. My measurement that I just took is sixty seven feet of wetland. On that other boundary compared to, you know, over a hundred or more. On the other, on the other side, but if you look at my map, it's. Um, you can generally see it on the one that, that John provided. But it, it looks like it tails down on the eastern edge of that or southern edge, southeast.
It does. It does.
Which may be a poss, maybe all the possibility of reasonable access that you need.
Yeah, over sixty feet versus two hundred and something feet, you're saying.
Yeah.
So we, we'll, we'll get it checked out and. You know, if, if the board is inclined. You know, to, to consider the notion that a crossing of. You know, less disturbed area is, is possible. You know, I, I would continue with a, with a, a, a wetland scientist, and I, and I understand, this is the whole issue. All the other issues to me are, are pretty simple, there's plenty of space. Nothing's not safe. We can make the drainage work with all the space we have. We can replicate with the space we have. We can provide a, a turnout with the space we have. It's a technicality that I see stopping this from happening. Or potentially stopping this from happening.
One more, uh, just want to get caught up with what you guys were just saying. So this is, this is the my map?
Yes.
And what, what you're saying is that here. It's a more limited wetland crossing according to this, and I don't know.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's two forty six across the front, it probably is more like sixty something.
There, you can kind of see it here where.
There, yeah.
Vegetation changes, doesn't it, down there?
Yeah, it does.
You sort of see that brown, that line right here.
Well, I, I, I think they need to delineate it, John, um, in order to answer these questions, don't you?
I would be willing to get a scientist out there and, and get a quick look at it. And if, uh, if his verbal is that, oh, your line's over here and not over there. If I'll do that, you know, if the board would. You know, be willing to entertain it, if I come back with something that, that looks like. More like the town's plan, you know, uh, the GIS maps. Uh, then, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll make the effort.
Yeah, I mean, uh. This is all informal, right, we got two special permits, reduced frontage, I don't see. Any particular barriers why I would. Find objection to the reduced frontage. And the common driveway does make more sense to me than other approaches.
Yep.
I just wa, I just want to make sure that, you know. I just want to be comfortable with my vote and I'm, I'm, I'm reading the letter of the law here.
When did that start, Ray?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Yeah, that, that one goes back before, before my time here.
I, I concur, you know, as a former member, I, I agree, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Um, well, um. I, does anyone else have anything more to add, or shall we, uh, continue this when John is ready to up the ante? From an informal discussion to, um, having a proposal for us. I think what looks like we're about through. Thank you very much, Mr. Sarkis.
Okay.
And, and, um, I hope the Bruces can do what they propose here. And, um. Get a new little lot, a littler, littler house or a different house. Um, and make this happen, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Deb, I miss you all.
Thank you.
Take care, thanks again.
Um, in meeting with Sue this afternoon, we needed to add an additional, uh, agenda item. And we've talked about putting it in here. This is relating to the application for twenty six Church Street for the kennel license. The owners have indicated that they would like. To, uh, withdraw their application at this time. And, um, that we would then just vote to accept their withdrawal without prejudice. Any conversation?
Well, uh. Yeah, I, I would support the withdrawal without prejudice. It, this was, this was a tough one for me.
I would, and I would also say that since. We're inclined to accept withdrawal without prejudice, that little discussion should ensue.
Well, would someone like to make a motion that we do that, or I guess I can do that, I move that we accept. The Castro's withdrawal of the application for. Building a new building, uh, at twenty six Church Street without prejudice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second with a friendly amendment, it's, uh. Yeah, it's not so much building the building, it's, it's, uh. It's the special permit to have a kennel in the residential area.
Okay, leave the language at that, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Tim, Ann? Alright, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is town meeting. And I will not be here, um, but, um, customarily, we either give a report. For, of, from the planning committee, planning board. Um, or have a written report. Uh, or both. Um, Sue has prepared frequently asked questions document pertaining to the ADUs. Um, which I think will. Um, you know, be the, our main topic of conversation at. Uh, town meeting for our little part, uh, the MBTA. Um, Housing Opportunities Initiative is still ongoing and, um, it may come up. So I think whoever is going to be speaking for the board. Um, should, should involve, you know, just remind everybody that we are. Looking forward to a further forum with our advisors Dodson and Flinker on November fifteenth. But we have not really formalized changing any zoning or. Uh, identifying the properties that will be affected by that. So, um, how should we do this?
Well, one, one thing that we would typically do is that somebody, I think somebody from the planning board would at least read. Uh, the article for both the ADU and the other zoning bylaw change, which is the replacement of a section. So presumably that language gets generated, I think, often in the town manager's office or the town clerk's office, maybe? And it's a matter of figuring out the choreography so that the right person has the right piece of paper at the right time.
Right, they will write the motions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then rather, because there's a place at the beginning of the special town meeting where. Boards can make their reports, but I think everybody kind of zones out then. So I think that, that as far as how we do it, I think we would. Give a little statement right after making the motion, I think that's the best time to talk about it. I'd be actually, I see your point, Deb, and it would be good to encourage people to do the November fifteenth thing. But just from a political and logistic point of view, I'm hesitant to even bring that up. Uh, unless somebody else brings it up.
Right, I think we should.
It's almost guaranteed to put people in a bad mood.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, I think that could be, we could all know the correct answer to that question.
Yeah.
And encourage people to come on November fifteenth to learn more, but it's not. We have to be very clear about what's on the table that night and what's not on the table. I also don't think we want to get into read, I, I really like this FAQ document. But I don't want to stand there and read the whole thing, because then debate and all kinds of people hearing it for the first time will. Will be quicksand for the meeting, so.
Right, I think the goal was at best a three minute presentation. So who, who was going to make that presentation?
But what, what is it that's going to be presented then?
Uh, the, the, the ADU bylaw and, uh, anything else that we have. Done this year that, um. We should share with the town.
So I, I would suggest one approach here would be just to read the motion. And there will undoubtedly be questions that come up during the discussion. And then I think it's probably most efficient. To just answer those questions as they pop up, I don't know what Sue and Ann and Tim and you think, Deb, but.
So I think what, I think what I'm hearing is that at least some members of the board don't want to do a report at the beginning of the special town meeting. They'd rather just. Provide the motions and answer questions at the time of the warrant article, is that, is that?
That's the way I feel about it, because I feel like everybody sort of zones out and kind of like is. Wants those little reports at the beginning to be over with, because everybody has this mistaken idea that maybe we can get home early.
So I think that, that's the, that's the decision for the board and then the motions definitely. And who might re, want to respond to those is certainly, um. Uh, another, that's another discussion, but I think the first. Question is, is there going to be a report? If you confer that, concur that there shouldn't be one, and I'm not saying that's been concurred, but. If that's the case, then we just need to deal with who's going to make the motion.
Right.
Well, that's, I, I believe we don't need a report, I think it's more customary to do those reports at. Spring town meeting, the special town meeting is usually kind of a mop up, frankly.
That's true.
Mop up and other things that we're ready to do, like these bylaws, but it's not the full blown meeting, meeting.
That's true.
I mean, Brian may feel differently, he's not here, but sometimes the chair. What?
I said, we can appoint Brian to deliver it.
Well, I'm just trying to think, do we usually do it as, have the chair do it, I think we often do, but not always.
Well, I think Ray did it last year, um, when. He, what, what, don't you remember you made a presentation last, but maybe it was.
But I vaguely rec, remember being more important back then.
I, I don't think you were chair though.
No, I was and then Brian was, so.
No, I mean, uh, I, I, if, if you guys want me to, uh, read the motion and then stand there to field initial questions as they come in. I'm, I'm glad to do it with the understanding that. You guys will pop up, uh, when you can answer a question better than I can, or, you know, correct me if I make a mistake in my answer or.
Good. Well, then, let's, let's say it's you and if, uh. Brian comes back and really wants to do it, you can duke it out.
Brian comes back and he wants to do it, it's his.
Okay.
No duking required.
No, no duking required.
And, yeah, I also think it is helpful for others to chime in because.
Yes.
You can feel quite lonely at that microphone.
Especially when people start talking about short term rentals and.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I'm ready for that one.
You're good, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I will say though, Sue, in the report, there's still a, a couple of, there's a rhetorical question that shouldn't appear in the final report.
That, thank you, um, I, I also sent this to, um, Cheryl Richardson just to get a, a, a non-member viewpoint. And she, she tagged that for me, so it's no longer in there.
That's about, do we know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and there's a little, a little typo, the very last, um, bulleted list. It should be provide a home for a loved one in need of.
Yes. She did, and actually, and I got some, a little bit further from Brian who wished. For me just to take that out, that last bullet about why. Um, and replace it with the, an answer to the question, how was the proposed bylaw developed? So in other words, share our process, he thought that would be more valuable information, so I've drafted some of that.
Oh, okay.
That I'm happy to, to send out with you, and we can do this, um, you know. Just back and forth between us, um, in advance of the town meeting, but I'm happy to get anyone else's input on any of the rest.
I think that's a good idea. About how it was developed, I wonder if it should even be sooner in the.
Yeah, I could put it, I could put, I could put it second, what is an ADU and may, you know.
A fundamental thing, and people may make people feel more settled to know that before they learn details, but that's just. They make people feel more settled to know that before they learn details, but that's just me being pedagogical.
Sue, and yeah, the rental, I'm glad that, you know. So what, what would it say with respect to our short term rentals allowed in an ADU? So that first bullet would remain? Oh, it says ADUs would be regulated same as other.
Um, so I, yes, and then so the first bullet says ADUs would be regulated as well as any other dwelling if they are prohibited in West Newbury's. That prohibition would also cover ADUs. The, the answer is the select board is asking voters at the 2023 fall meeting to establish that short term rentals are not allowed in residential districts in West Newbury by deleting section. What is it? Thirty-nine of the West Newbury bylaw. Note that in 2021, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court affirmed a prior land court decision finding that if not specifically permitted, short term rentals are not a permitted use in residential zoning districts. So. And it would, yes, and it would end there.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. I think that answers the one recurring question that we seem to get is about rentals, so.
And this, and that, actually, if you've looked at the the warrants, the town meeting booklet, you'll notice that that comes up in advance of this.
Right. Noted on anyway, so.
That we will note the answer to that question, but if this, since this will be posted could be posted on the website, the project website in advance, then I think it would be helpful to keep all that information in there.
I think it should be on it up there in advance. I think it takes a while to absorb this stuff.
It does.
That was a good idea to ask Cheryl for some input, I think.
Well, she had offered to to help in any way she could. She also did say that she had, she anticipates speaking, that she would love to speak on behalf of this article.
Great.
Anything else related to town meeting? Anyone have anything to add?
I plan to be there.
Okay, good.
You're the only one Deb who won't.
Ray, Tim, you're going to be there?
Yeah, well, yeah. That'd be pretty lousy of me to say I'll stand up and do the motion, but, and then just not show up. But, but you know, I wouldn't put it past me.
But I think Brian is certainly back before then.
He is back by then, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, great. Well, moving on, we've got two sets of minutes to review.
All right, I'll get those up. I think.
Starting with nine, five?
Now, I will say that on the agenda, it has updated housing opportunities initiative, but is that going to be in?
Well, in talking to Sue about that, that pertains really to the MBTA, which is an ongoing discussion that as Ray pointed out, maybe we don't want to bring it up ourselves.
No, not, not for town meeting, but it's on our agenda just to be talked about, so.
Oh, okay.
So is, is the new thing, the solidifying of this November 15th?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I just wanted to, to make sure that the, the next step schedule is all on the the project website. And it does, oh, I just had it. So it does include the Dodson and Flinker coming to the planning board's meeting on November 7th to share proposed, to share the, the concept plans and the draft regulations. So they'll get your feedback on that and then on November 15th, the very next week, if, you know, have any questions, but they would share it more broadly in a, in a larger public forum.
Great, yeah. Did we get a clarification on that whole November 7th election day business?
So it's, well, it's a federal election. We don't have town election that day.
Okay.
So we're good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, so then following that forum, it's really just an iterative process back and forth about, you know, meeting with you, getting input on the regulations. Updating them, checking against the compliance model with an executive office of housing in movable communities and just, you know, making sure that we're staying in touch with that office to make sure that everything we're doing is compliant and moving through to to develop those draft regulations. And I think their Dodson and Flinkers pushes to try to get as much from the community and from the board in direction as to what, in particular, the design guidelines, so that we can feel confident that we're setting the developer up to do what, you know, the vision is for that property.
All right. Thank you.
Did Tim have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. When did, when are they looking for input on design guidelines?
So once, so they're going to present to the board on November 7th?
Yep.
And then, so that will be the draft regulations and it will include those design guidelines. That language in there. And then they'll, so from then on, it'll be just, they'll be tightening that language based on you know, the board's reaction and public input and.
Okay.
It's kind of the, the balance of their project and then just testing it, continually testing it with the state to make sure that they haven't gone too far in the design guidelines, you know. Just to make sure we're, we're in the box that we're supposed to be in.
Okay, so, but they will have like some suggestions about design guidelines.
Yes, yes, they will definitely, they will present them, yeah.
Excellent, great.
And now I can share the minutes.
Thank you.
You see those?
Yes.
Don't really need that preamble, so. Would you all have a chance to check them out?
Yes.
Right. Any corrections or?
This is the one for the 19th, right, Sue?
This is September 5th.
This is the fifth, okay.
It references moving eighty-seven Crane Next Street onto the 19th.
Right.
The only thing I had in this section one that you're showing there.
Yes.
I just had a question. It says, there's a sentence that says a more likely scenario included a ninety bedroom buildout, which is permitted under Title V subject requirements. It just struck me that that was a like, a more likely scenario.
So it's a ninety, so I got caught on this. It's a ninety bedroom. So we switched to units, to units to bedroom. I know, yeah, so it's a ninety bedroom unit. I know, I, that caught me several times. I'm like, wait a minute, how can you go from a ninety to ninety? Would you, ninety units to ninety bedrooms?
Do you consider italicizing the word bedroom?
Sure, or, or, and we could put in parentheses. Thirty to forty units, we could do something like that too.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, that, your idea is better, because.
Carefully, okay.
I read it multiple times and I even wrote to him and I'm like, wait a minute, I think you made a mistake. And he said, no, I think you're misreading. I will make that change. I can't on this one because it's a PDF, but I'll.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Any others?
Such a long meeting. Those were nice, compact minutes.
We have.
As edited?
Second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Okay, it's unanimous. Moving on to September 19th.
So in this one and.
Was the hearing.
Yeah, so in this one Sue, that where it says Sam Jocelyn, let me see where it's coming up there. I think what got left out, at least the way that I read it, was that we were talking in the context of an existing non-conforming lot. And I think that got lost in this sentence that talks about Sam Jocelyn discussing purpose of the.
So for a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Can build on a non, you know, existing non-conforming lot.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or non-conform lot or structure.
Right.
Over the structure.
That's right.
And also as we're looking at the, I see that zoning is misspelled. Yeah, it's like King Kong or something.
The Zon Board of Appeals, sounds like it's going to be a Star Trek series.
See that before.
Perfect.
This is all sort of moot now.
We want to accurately reflect what happened though.
That's true.
May not stay moot forever.
That's true.
Although I didn't see anything that jumped out.
I did notice that she put David Moody of fifteen Church Street with a question mark. Do we know if that was his name?
Get the list and I'll see. My trusty book here, let's see, what have we got?
I thought I looked it up and it was correct, but.
Church Street number what?
Fifteen.
Yes, David Moody M O O D Y.
Okay, great.
Under number five, Dylan's name is with two L's.
Just recapped number six tonight.
Yeah, we did.
And we came out with the same decision.
That's so reassuring.
Don't we always agree with Bardine?
If you know it's good for you, you do.
Is there a motion to accept the September 19th minutes? And second? All in favor?
Ray Cook, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
Deb Halden, I.
Right.
Okay. All right. Other than those little edits, Sue, you're good.
Perfect.
Here we have correspondence.
From the zoning board of appeals of Newbury.
Or Plum Island.
More Plum Island. Think it was for a lower, for a a higher dwelling, I think, an increase in height.
That was raised in order to, okay, thank you, and April.
April was notice of a hearing. And theirs is for proposed zoning amendment.
Yeah.
I don't know, and they didn't tell us either. And I haven't had the time to look it up, but I don't think I.
Maybe a lot of them.
Maybe. And then, and then a decision from Groveland. For a property in the industrial zoning district. Restaurant.
Restaurant.
That's right, a restaurant in their industrial district.
Interesting.
And then the other one was kind of Merrimack, a public meeting.
Manufacturing building, huh?
Right.
Seems like there's already a lot of that's Amesbury in that area. Things are happening.
Things are happening.
Okay. Any administrative details, Sue, that need our attention?
So I would just say that I have begun preparation of a decision for the eighty-seven Crane Neck that I will share with you. I've mimicked the format of a previous decision, of course, as known. And took conditions off that. I found one for both the reduced frontage lots and I found one for a driveway, shared driveway. And adjusted it to make sense for this. So I will pass those around in advance of next week's hearing, so you'll kind of be able to look it over and think about other, whether they all apply and whether any others are appropriate as well, so. Just to let you know, those are all queued up and ready to, to look at.
Great. Future meetings, our next meeting, I believe, we've got three weeks. It's November 7th.
Yeah.
Which, as we already discussed, is election day. And it sounds like eighty-seven Crane Neck is on the agenda and and we have Dodson Flinker, yes, so. Anything else lined up for that meeting, Sue?
A celebration on the passing of the ADU bylaw.
Got it. There will not be wine.
Start chilling the champagne.
Am I the only one who feels like I got a knock on wood now?
I, I will do that. I would be the last one. Want to jinx that.
Celtics, didn't the Celtics do that to the Lakers where the Lakers had champagne on ice? It was like nineteen sixty-nine or something.
My memory.
Uh-oh, now I'm scared.
No, I think, I think we're, I think that's going to be a no brainer.
Oh, I hope.
Yeah. Well, I don't have anything else. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Well done, Deb.
Yes, well done.
Oh, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, aye.